Good evening, welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It is Tuesday, September seventeenth at six oh one P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation. If you would remain standing for Pastor Justin Anthony with Bethel Christian Ministries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as our own.
Mayor Hyken, Bellevue City Council, thank you for allowing us to be here today specifically to pray before the Lord our God. In asking for his governance in these meetings, I'm honored and humbled to pray today on the behalf of our church in this community. I feel moved today to personally kneel before the Lord. I don't want to embarrass anybody, but I do sense a strong urgency to pray this on my knees. I will pray a little louder, but would you join me as we pray?
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses. We forgive those who have sinned against us. We believe in God in the foundation, but the worship of his people. For thine is his kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever.
Thank you Pastor. Susan, roll call, please.
Mr. Stinson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
Ms. Welch.
Here.
Thank you. This meeting will be conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. Copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item number five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Shannon.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to approve. Councilman Shannon.
I would move to amend the agenda. At the request of the applicant, we would be removing item fourteen A. And I would ask that we move item seventeen, the administrative reports, before current business. Because we're going into closed session, doesn't make sense to not get it done first. So that is my motion.
Second.
Motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to amend as stated. Any further comments? Take a vote on the amendment.
All voted yes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Shannon, seconded by Preister to approve the agenda as amended. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Alright, so that moves us to item five B, approval of the consent agenda. Councilman Cook.
Thank you, I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Okay, item seven, we've been asked to hold off a couple of minutes on that, so we are gonna skip ahead to item number eight. Well, excuse me, that's in consent, so. Takes us to item number nine, approved citizen communication. None. Item number ten. Liquor licenses, ten A, recommendation to approve the application of Sickies N D Inc. Doing business as Sickies Garage Burgers and Brew for Class I Liquor License to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits. On sale only at twelve oh three Cornhusker Road, Bellevue, and for Robert Went as manager. Are there any representatives from Sickies here? Please come forward. Just state your name and address, please.
Will Beerman, one oh two five zero Regency Circle, Omaha, Nebraska.
Okay, if you wanna state anything, you can. I'm gonna open up the public hearing and just hang around for questions, but you're free to make any statements you want.
Nothing to state, simply here to answer questions.
Alright, I will open the public hearing for the liquor license. Is there anyone here in favor or against the liquor license? For Sickies? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. And please sign in the sheet as well. Should be at the table there. Okay, do I have a motion? Councilwoman Welch.
I'll make a motion that we approve the, to the Nebraska Liquor Commission, the recommended to approve the application for Sickies N D Inc. Doing business as Sickies Garage Burgers and Brew for a Class I Liquor License to sell beer, wine, and distilled spirits on sale only at twelve oh three Cornhusker Road, Bellevue.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Stinson. Any comments? Questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Okay, thank you for attending. Item ten B, recommend approval of Willow Springs Bottling Company Inc. Doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart. A special designated liquor license at one thousand Galvin Road, Bellevue University. John Muller Building, lower level, on Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand nineteen, from two P M to seven P M for the Bellevue University Symposium.
Hi, I'm Jim Subject, the mayor, the mayor. Sorry Rusty, sometimes it just doesn't. I'm the owner and the manager of Cornhusker Beverage Mart. This is a special event where there's a symposium and they wanna have a cash bar for their guests. And the way they do it is you have to get a vendor to come in and perform it for you. It's one of the things that Cornhusker Beverage Mart does.
Okay. Stick around and I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here that, to speak in favor or against the liquor license? Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Councilman Cook.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval to Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. The recommendation of Willow Springs Bottling Company Inc. Doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart. A special designated liquor license at one thousand Galvin Road, Bellevue University, John Muller Building. On Tuesday, October eighth, two thousand nineteen, from two P M to seven P M for the Bellevue University Symposium.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Alright, thank you. Thank you Mayor Jim. N C, recommend approval of the S D L for Old Town Tavern during Oktoberfest at one zero seven West Mission Avenue. To set up a beer garden on October fifth, two thousand nineteen, from twelve P M to two A M. That would be twelve P M the fifth to two A M the sixth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Greg Stokelak, owner of Old Town Tavern.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor or against the liquor license? Liquor license for Old Town Tavern. Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Burns.
I move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, the S D L for Old Town Tavern during Oktoberfest at one oh seven West Mission Avenue. To set up a beer garden on October fifth, twenty nineteen, from twelve P M to two A M.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Councilman Cook.
Just two real quick questions, is there live music?
Depending, depending on the time of the Husker game, I'm trying to line up some accordion players, maybe play during halftime. If there is music, I mean, it will be done, it will be done playing, say by ten or eleven o'clock at the latest. So I, I haven't got anything in writing yet.
How about security?
I have some employees, I always hire extra employees to front and back doors. They put bracelets on everybody that are drinking, and then they walk around and make sure everything's alright. That's my, I've never had any problems down there.
And how many years have you put this on?
Think this would be maybe my third.
Okay, with no problems?
No.
I just got a quick question to the captain. If there's loud music, is there gonna be an issue if we get a complaint? And we don't have an ending time of any music? So in other words, if we just left, leave it as being open? And it has loud music? Does a current, does a current ordinance say it has to be shut down at this time? Or should we make an amendment saying if there is loud music, it has to be shut down at this time?
Well, if.
Just in case you get calls of loud music.
If you approve the loud music and there's no end time on it, then we have a difficult time trying to get them to turn it off based on your approval. So if there's an end time, that makes it much more simple for us.
I would agree. So can we agree to a time?
Um.
Midnight, is that?
Yeah, even eleven o'clock's fine.
I want you to feel comfortable and have a range that you're, feel comfortable with.
Sure, that's fine.
Eleven P M?
Would be the latest. Yep.
I would like to make an amendment. Is that, would that be the proper way of doing it? I'd like to make an amendment that if there is live music at this event, that it will shut down by eleven P M on October fifth. Is that good?
That's good.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch to amend the liquor license agreement to shut live music down by eleven P M on the fifth. Any further questions? Please vote on the amendment.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Now we need a vote on the liquor license itself. A motion by Burns, seconded by Preister, any further questions? And that is as amended? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Thank you Greg.
Thanks.
We're gonna return to item number seven, which is the special presentations. Seven A, proclamation recognizing the ten year anniversary of Green Bellevue, who held their first public planning meeting on September twenty seventh, two thousand nine.
We're having some technical difficulties and not able to put, bring up a PowerPoint, I believe. That's what we were trying to get done. The mayor is checking on it for sure to make sure it is or isn't a go.
I don't think they're gonna, I don't think it's gonna work.
If the members of Green Bellevue would come forward for the proclamation reading, unfortunately, a very nice PowerPoint that was put together won't be able to be seen.
If he gets it up, we'll, we'll play it. Come on up to the podium, please, anybody with Green Bellevue? Okay, I'll read the proclamation in the record. City of Bellevue, Nebraska, Office of the Mayor proclamation. Green Bellevue, ten year anniversary. Whereas, we are proud to recognize the tenth anniversary of forming Bellevue's Green Team, which held its first planning meeting on September twenty seventh, two thousand nine. And whereas, then Mayor Gary Mixon appointed Councilman Don Preister to form this Green Team to focus community efforts on enhancing environmental stewardship. And whereas, Green Bellevue was then incorporated as a five oh one C three organization that has continuously met, planned, funded, and conducted improvement projects and monthly high quality educational programs to benefit our city, the region, and the world. And whereas, Green Bellevue recruits countless volunteers to plant and care for city gardens, organizes city cleanups, rallies the community behind zero waste events, tirelessly promotes recycling to lighten our loads to the landfill. And more, Green Bellevue's leadership developed a tree ordinance with a tree board that raises funds and recruits volunteers who have planted over eleven hundred city trees to date. And whereas, Green Bellevue is responsible for generating grants and services totaling to date three million dollars, out of which the annual Sarpy County Earth Day event was born, and the Eastern Nebraska Veterans Home Bio Retention Gardens were planted and are maintained. And whereas, Green Bellevue has been recognized for its contributions, including the First Lady's Outstanding Community Service Award in two thousand eleven, Nebraska Wildlife Federation Conservation Organization of the Year in two thousand fourteen, and was honored in two thousand eighteen by then Mayor Rita Sanders with the highest civic award our city bestows, the Jewel of Bellevue. Now therefore, I, Rusty Hyke, Mayor of Bellevue, recognizing the significant value our city receives from Green Bellevue, do hereby proclaim Friday, September twenty seventh, two thousand nineteen, as Green Bellevue Day, and I urge everyone to celebrate to support a cleaner, greener Bellevue. Okay, thank you for coming out. That will move us to item number eleven, ordinances for adoption, third reading. There are none this evening. Item twelve, ordinances, ordinances for public hearings, second readings. Before we get started on this, we're gonna have public hearings, I know there's a lot of people in the audience. If we could just limit our time to no more than five minutes per person, that'll help us get things moved along. Item twelve A. Ordinance number three nine six six, request to annex sanitary improvement district number sixty seven, Normandy Hills. Susan, could you read the ordinance into the record?
An ordinance to annex to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within sanitary and improvement district number sixty seven as outlined in the ordinance to the City of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, I will open up the meeting, public meeting, so anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Please state your name and address when you come up and sign into the sheet.
I signed this sheet over here, is it?
That's good enough, yeah, either one.
Mister Mayor, members of the council, I'm Dean Jungers, a lawyer practicing here in Bellevue. Have, represent SID sixty seven, our offices, represented them for probably twenty years or so. In addition to the items that are in the summary for the organization that Tammy Palm and Mister Suchek provided, I think the council ought to know some additional items. Number one, I have been authorized by the board to, if you do annex us, we will be filing a lawsuit to stop that, similar to the one that the Darling and Creche has filed. And since you guys will be taking over our litigation under the statute, I think that's gonna cost you, there are additional costs to defend that. You'll have to get outside counsel to represent the interest of the district to, to fight yourselves. But as you're aware, the Creche, or the Creche and the Darling property was was annexed. And if their appeal is successful, then you will not be adjacent, you will, the city limits will not be adjacent to our district. And therefore, we have to protect our interests by joining in that litigation or filing our own litigation. In addition to that, there's another matter pending in the District Court of Sarpy County at the present time, which is an inverse condemnation, or county court, I'm sorry. It's an inverse condemnation case against the county and the State Department of Roads. What, what they, what they did to us basically was they, the, your international fire code says that you gotta have two fire entrances into the property, and they cut off one of our fire entrances. And so we are in order to provide two, two fire exits, or entrances and exits, we have to build a new road presumably to the, to the south, down to Highway thirty four, because we can't get access to Highway seventy five. We estimate the cost of that to be approximately three million dollars. So there, in addition to that, the, the one fire exit that we do have on the north end of Grenoble Drive is impassable during the winter time. It needs to be restructured, they, the county and the state just kinda jury rigged that, that whole road in there. When you come up during the winter time, you have to slow down to make a sharp right hand, or left hand turn, and then up a hill. And it, it's just very hard to, to maneuver. We've had a lot of trouble with people getting stuck on that hill, or getting stuck on the, the turn. And we're very concerned about what would happen if we had to have an emergency and people were piled up in that in that intersection during a, a snowstorm. How would they get in to, to, to serve our, our citizens? So those are things that are not in the information, that would be additional expenses for the city. In addition to that, the, your ordinance says, one of the things that you will find is, whereas this real estate will be received, will receive material benefits and advantages from annexation into the city. The memo supporting this, prepared by the planning board, lists these services as street maintenance, snow removal, park maintenance, police response, fire response, and notes that were already served by the fire, Bellevue Fire Department at the same time, wastewater service, trash removal. All these things we have now. The only two things that we hit, that we are gonna be gaining are library cards to a library that's five or six miles away, and specialized transportation services. I don't think that this is a material benefit or advantage to being in the City of Bellevue, and neither do my clients. It seems to me that the prudent thing to do is to table this until such time as a litigation with the Darling and the Creche cases are done. And then come back and, and do it at a later time. That way, you would, you wouldn't have to get your people in there and then get them out again, and the whole thing, so. As a resident of Bellevue and a, and representing the SID, I think that I would respectfully request that you postpone this until such time as those two cases can be decided by the District Court and Supreme Court if necessary. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
How you doing? My name is Dennis Ryan. I'm chairman right now of the SID sixty seven. I live at eight forty one Bordeaux, Bellevue, six eight one two three, Normandy Hills. I've talked to your city planning board several times. They weren't too happy to see me. As Mister Jungers had mentioned, they have taken away our two entrances that we've had there. As Mister Jungers had mentioned, uh, they have taken away our two entrances that we've had there for years. And they closed them both off. And the entrance coming in on Fort Crook South, they've named it now, it turns and goes up Grenoble. Which is a very very steep grade. It's like ten percent grade, which makes it awful hard for fire trucks to get in and just any semis. Uh, a lot of air force people live in there, so they're getting transferred periodically and they have moving vans and trucks that come in. You have a storage facility there that has people coming in and going all the time. Uh, they've got a company right now, uh, some kinda cable communications. They're putting in some underground cable. And they park in their truck on half of the road and they've put their trailers out onto the shoulders, which is actually it just goes down into soft dirt. Uh, they put shoulders on, they never put them on before and the shoulders now are probably about two and a half foot wide when they were supposed to have been like four. The whole road was put in with no kind of road bed put down. It was put down nine inches of asphalt on top of dirt. And where where the way the road runs downhill, uh, at the low spot. That's where we had a lot of moisture coming because that field there it floods periodically. And, uh, they had to come in before, uh, this spring and it fixed that a little bit. Now they came in here and put in these shoulders and they took and put in. A new layer of asphalt over the washboard that we had. There's so many things that that we were concerned with mainly safety. Uh, we have two people in our subdivision that I know about that have one has, uh. Strokes. Uh, and not strokes, yeah stroke and, uh. Then there's another young lady that she has seizures. The lady that had the stroke, uh, it took the fire department fifteen minutes to get into our place because they didn't know how to get in there. The city const or not city, the planning board told me that, oh, they just run the fire truck through the through the great, uh, the gates down there that are padlocked on. South end of Normandy and, uh. When this thing all came about back in two thousand four and supposed to have been done in two thousand eight. The fire, uh, chief, he said, there's no way I'm running my truck through there. And, uh, so there's a real cons- uh, concern for safety there. And we know that those apartments would like to go in there. We have no problem with that. It's just that we they're gonna be three and four bedroom apartments. And that's gonna cause to have us to have more than two hundred more vehicles on that road. So you got air force people coming in and out at, uh, in the morning and at night. You've got school buses coming in and out at night. And then you've got people moving and and with the if they do take and put in their apartments, you're gonna have construction workers. Uh, with their cars and big trucks delivering materials and it's just gonna wear that road out right away. I really think you guys can hold off like Mister Junkin said, uh, until after the lawsuits were finalized. I think it would be a lot more savings for you guys money wise if you hold off for it. We're we've got all the services we want. I have talked to, uh, Don Kelly from the Sarpy County Community Nurse. And I was talking to him in regards to the snow removal and stuff and he said he told me flat out. That he says, once you guys annex this, you're responsible for mowing and the snowing removal. He says, we're not gonna be doing any of it. So that might be something you might wanna discuss with the county. But, uh, if you got any questions, I'd be glad to answer them if I can.
Okay, thank you. We're gonna try to address the the questions at the end here so we don't cut into people's time. So anybody else wishing to speak?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm also against the annexation. My name is Dan Jamrosi. I live at one fifty oh four Normandy Boulevard. My reasons are a little bit different. When I was here last month with the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were seven or eight. Annexations on the book and they spoke about how how it was ripe. It's a ripe timed annex in Bellevue. Now these total fifty eight hundred people, I believe they said, I don't know how many road miles, how many parks. The additional police, fire, administrative, it's just gonna lead to much higher taxes. And I think the city is aggressively trying to annex too many too soon. Us being one of those too many too soon. Thank you.
Dan, can I get you to sign in? Anybody else wanting to speak for Normandy Hills? For or against the annexation?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak regarding the Normandy Hills annexation? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. I'm gonna start out with a couple of comments here. Uh, we are pending litigation, um, so the discussion. Uh, we can't have a lot of discussion regarding that open litigation. The council has been informed of, uh, uh, some of the items going on and they will, uh, listen, they're listening to everything you're saying and. We'll answer those questions with the council. Um, I I respect your, uh, opinion on that road. I can I can tell you, uh, going through eight years of eminent domain. With the state myself on another property. Uh, they use that against me stating I couldn't develop because I only had one entrance. Well, they gave you one entrance for about seven hundred residents there, so. Um, that that's a legitimate argument. Any other comments from the? Council this time, questions? Okay. Public hearings closed. This third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen here in the council chambers. Item twelve B ordinance number three nine six seven request to annex sanitary and improvement district number one eighty Lakewood Villages. Susan, would you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue Sarpy County Nebraska certain lands lots and real estate lying within. Sanitary Improvement District number one eighty as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue Sarpy County Nebraska and designating an effective date.
Thank you. I'll open up for public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on the, uh. Annexation of number one eighty Lakewood Villages, please come forward. Just a reminder, we're doing good so far. Just if you can limit to five minutes, that'd be great.
Good evening. My name's Dale Richter. I reside at forty nine ten Coffee Street in, um, in Lakewood Villages. I'd like to read, uh, from our Sid chairman. She sent an email this morning and and, um, uh, this is kinda what it. I'll try to paraphrase some of this. It says, um, although the increased tax revenue is is appealing to Bellevue, the council should be aware that the debt. The value ratio that cities typically use as a metric for annexations, three percent Lakewood Villages is at four point five percent right now. It's a lot of debt for the city to take on. Next item Sid is very has been very diligent and conservative with expenditures, but has made it a priority to maintain common areas faithfully, mowing, trimming. Trash service, restroom, maintenance, repairs, landscaping, maintenance, park maintenance, tennis court maintenance, snow removal from trails, et cetera. The city of Bellevue apparently does not have enough personnel or budget to continue this level of maintenance. And there is no H A, no HOA in place for our neighborhood. That's something that the planning, um, um, department that was amazed that we didn't have an HOA out there. They kept saying, why don't the HOA take care of it? Well, we don't have one. Next item, with the reduced commitment to common area maintenance that's inevitable, the neighborhood will enter a period of decline and property values could potentially stagnate. This could later cause problems for the city council since the debt taken on will persist regardless of property valuation levels. Given above eventualities, we would recommend the city of Bellevue defer annexation for a few years until the debt to value ratio is more favorable. This would constitute a win-win scenario. Uh, some other items of the, how many annexations, you let me count, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Nine annexations on the agenda tonight. Uh, Lakewood Villages has more than half the, almost fifty percent of the miles, uh, nineteen roughly twenty miles. Out of roughly forty. So you got you picking up, you picking up just for Lakewood Villages. Half the half the miles. And all the other pro- other Sid that you were planning to annex. Also, I don't know how many, I don't know how many of 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 the council members have ever been to Lakewood Villages. I don't know. I'm not gonna ask or show hands. But we have a, we have a wonderful park. We have, uh, we have a a nice playground out there. We have tennis courts. We have, um, uh, restrooms that we that we control by by lock, by cipher lock. We control the. The gates on the tennis courts by cipher lock. And we have a system where people can call, um, in fact, the Lakewood Villages Neighborhood Association, which I'm the treasurer of. We we, um, we give people the codes if they live in the neighborhood as to keep people from vandalizing it out there. So I guess their biggest concerns is we we somehow we just don't feel that the city of Bellevue has enough personnel or the or the equipment. To to take care of all that property. There's there's quite a few trails out there. And, uh, if anybody was out there walking, you can see people walking those trails almost any day of the week. Doesn't matter if it's rain or snow or what people use the trails. I just wanted to be make sure that you're all aware of the of the debt ratio and and that, uh. We just we just doubt that the city of Bellevue can can maintain that property as well as the S I D has maintained it. So I would recommend that you defer for a couple of years until the debt ratio gets much lower, that you can afford that and also afford to take care of our properties. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I didn't exceed my five minutes.
Oh, you did good. Got another minute, you want it?
Maybe later.
I'm David Francoise, live at forty six thirteen Lake Forest Drive. Um, I'm president of the Lakewood Villages Homeowners Association. And I was sure to make sure that this letter forward to, uh. The city clerk this this afternoon was given to each council member. And I, this has been brought up. By Dale. Also wanna bring up the fact is that we have these outlots. On the south side of, uh, Lake Forest Drive. From Windcrest to, uh, Timber Ridge. Our association has been taking care of these outlots. The reason why I'm concerned about these these outlaw sidewalks. Is I've seen children walk into school every morning at seven thirty. Two of my neighbor neighbor children were eleven year old and eight year old. They walk down this. Sidewalk every day to go up to, uh, Bellevue Elementary. And if the roads are not sidewalk's not gonna do, they're gonna be walking on the street. And and we had one instance that this week where a child was. Died because their subdivision he lived in has no sidewalks. And I have, uh, previous job I retired from seven years ago was I was a city, city leather carrier for the city of Bellevue. For U S Postal Service. And I've known a lot of lot of subdivisions and parts of Bellevue that don't have sidewalks. So if you do annex this, I I like for that sidewalk to be done early in the morning for these children who walk up to the to the school. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, did you sign in? Just make sure. Okay, thank you.
My name is Kent Whitaker, one one seven one three Bayview Drive in Papillion, Nebraska. I also live in Lakewood Villages. I want to add a couple more items. I noticed on the report that the, uh, planning committee wrote up this summer. They recommend. Two police officers for every thousand residents. With these annexations, you're bringing in about six thousand more residents. Are there twelve police officers ready to come online November one? Understand the city of Bellevue is already short on police officers and now you'll be adding additional burden to that. So we as residents get the same level of service. As we get from the county now. Also, you're adding on, as you mentioned, forty miles of streets. Your street department is already short staffed, short on equipment. Now you're adding on more streets. Is there more equipment and staff ready to come online November one? Who's gonna clean our streets when the snow flies this winter? That'll be the city's obligation, no longer the county's obligation. Do you have money in the budget to hire staff and equipment to handle these needs? Also, they have mentioned our parks, trails, which I use three or four times a week. We mow them now, I believe, at least once a week, once every other week. What is the city's parks, uh, policy on mail on mail mowing? Parks and so forth, grassways and strips. Is it gonna be two twice a week or twice a month, once a month, three times a summer? We need to know what level of service we're gonna get with the city when you bring us into your, um, city limits. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak regarding Lakewood Villages?
Edward Schmidt, uh, one one nine zero nine South Fifty Third Street in Lakewood Villages. I only have, uh, a couple of concerns. One is what steps have you taken to ensure? That, uh, our S I D won't be or will be maintained in the manner it currently is. And, uh, what steps have been taken to ensure proper law enforcement for that area? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak regarding Lakewood Villages?
Robert Zekman, four six oh five Lakewood, Lake Forest Drive. Uh, the one thing I I spoke at the, uh, meeting earlier on the planning meeting and I'm an avid cyclist and I ride the trails a lot. Um, one of the concerns I have is the maintenance of these trails and I believe these other, the other general, but previous to me also spoke about maintenance issues. Um, the Mark Hulubar trail that goes up to Twin Creek, they've had construction signs in front of that now for months. Some of them are laying on the ground where your tires can hit them. If your tires hit those things, you're going into the street and if you get hit by a car, it's really gonna hurt. So it has not been taken care of very well at all. Furthermore, they put down some asphalt on there instead of fixing the concrete, they just threw some asphalt on there. And the walls themselves that are hold up the the retaining walls around the trail are also dilapidated. That I've been told they are done working on it, but there's stones still missing out of the out of that wall. So I'm, uh, my concern is that type of maintenance is what's going to happen to our neighborhood and that really concerns me. So, uh, that's my piece on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Lakewood Villages?
I still have a minute?
Yeah, I'll give you a minute, Dale. The, uh. One minute.
The, uh. There's seven hundred plus, um, facility or homes in in our neighborhood. That's 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 a lot of houses. And there are, there are three HOAs. Uh, there's two townhomes HOAs that take care of, they just basically. I think the the lake homes, they charge people to upkeep of the of the shoreline. That's it. And then there's two townhome associations. They they take care of the snow and and the grass and every five or seventy years they collect money for for, um, for, uh, painting. But there are no other, no other HOAs out there. It doesn't mean that we maybe couldn't start one, but that that takes money and and time. The other concern was the outlots. When I go out to, when I go out to to do membership drives for a neighborhood association, I go to Sarpy County and I get all the properties under S I D one eighty. And there's tremendous number of outlots. So I don't know what the city plan is for outlots. Now some of those outlots are owned by the Lake Home Association. The sign when you drive down Forty Eighth Street, that big beautiful sign that says Lakewood Villages, that sits on property owned by the Lake Home Association. And our neighborhood association, we pay for electricity to power the lights that shine on that thing. So I don't know what happens when the city takes it over. Do they take care, do they shut the lights off or I don't know what they do. So I don't know what what happens to the outlots. I would I would think that maybe some of the outlots that are behind people's property, I don't know if the city offers that to those people to say, hey. You wanna buy these lots that's right down the hill from you? I don't I don't know what happens there, but there's there's a lot of open common areas that. I would take that the city would have to mow. Everything behind, uh, Fifty First Street, so. So all the way, all the way from the, from the, uh, just south or just north of the, uh, park, all the way behind the houses on Fifty-third Street, the trail, that's all down to there. That's all, you know, that's one just big outlaw. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on Lakewood Villages? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor. While you're checking for any answers that you may wanna provide, I'd like to address a, a few of the ones that I heard. Uh, one, I know I and several other council members have been to Lakewood Villages. It's a nice area and I appreciate it. Uh, we did get, David, we did get the emails. Our clerks are very efficient and they provided them here on our desk, so we have those. One of the things that was brought up in it is whether or not this will actually, uh, be cost-effective. Uh, I would partially ad, address that by saying our finance department has gone over this and all other annexations to make sure that it does meet all requirements. And that when the city is able to have it finalized as an annexation, we can refinance bonds. And currently, interest rates are very low, so the city will save money on those. We will also be amending the city budget after all annexations. And when the budget is amended, it will address some of the concerns about staffing and equipment, whether it's parks and maintenance or police officers. That will come likely December or, uh, our finance department did not want to presume any annexations. So the current budget does not include that, but we will be bringing forth an amended budget. One other issue I heard about biking along the trail and the walls and the construction material being left in the trail. I don't believe the city is doing that. So I'm assuming it's N R D on the trail or it's the S I D doing that? If somebody can maybe address that issue, I would appreciate that. Mr. Roberts?
Actually, it's the agency that they wanna continue to be a part of at Sarpy County.
Okay, so the issue is with Sarpy County currently. And from my ward in the area that I'm familiar with, the trails, the parks, uh, I could use a little better help in the parks when we do some things. But other than that, our streets are plowed quickly. Our fire response is good, our police protection is good. Uh, I think the city gives excellent services. So in this case, you're comparing what the county is doing. And I think it might improve once the city gets there. Mayor?
Thank you. Councilman Shannon?
Yeah, I, I, I too have spent time in Lakewood Village. As a matter of fact, I've owned a lot of it. Um, I'm the one that put Shannon Drive up there. So, uh, yeah, no, we're, we're very familiar with the issues. We're trying to take care of things. But, uh, along with all of the annexations, we're, we're encouraging HOAs to come in and take care of their own parks as, uh, as we're annexing. Uh, nobody's gonna take care of your park better than you. So those are things that, uh, we hope you consider.
I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Roberts address some of the mowing and parks. Uh, but I do just wanna state, um, if you guys need twelve police officers to watch Lakewood Villages, we might wanna rethink it because Sarpy County gives you two to, two, uh, in the Bellevue area, the total Bellevue area, so I, so I can't imagine we'd need that many, but. Uh, Jeff, go ahead and.
Okay, so I've spoke to several S I Ds. And what I tell each one of them is that we're going to continue with routine maintenance as the way we do with the rest of the city. So that would include mowing, tree trimming, uh, snow removal, you know, just your common things like that. A lot of the S I Ds have lights around the trails. They have irrigation systems in their parks. They have, uh, uh, ponds with fountains in them. And so these are all things that what I'm doing is I'm trying to work with each one and come to consensus that, okay, what do you do? What does the city do? Now let's kinda match this together to see how we can both facilitate each other. And that's kind of the, the process I'm working with.
Okay. Any further comments, questions by the council? Alright, thank you. That, uh, third reading for Lakewood Villages annexation will be held October first, two thousand nineteen, here in the council chambers. Item twelve C, ordinance number three-nine-six-eight, request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District, number two-zero-eight, sunrise phases three and four. Susan, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District, number two-oh-eight, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing for sunrise phases three and four. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding that annexation? Please come forward. Sunrise, phase three and four, annexation. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. That third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen. Item twelve D, ordinance number three-nine-six-nine, request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District, number one-five, Pipers Glen, city of Bellevue. Uh, Susan, would you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District, number two-fifteen, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. I will open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak regarding, uh, district number two-one-five, Pipers Glen? Believe that covers a portion of Oakhurst as well?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
My name's Chuck Hutchison. I live at one-three-nine-zero-four, Ron Boulevard. Um, thank you, I see you nodding. You've seen my email, so I appreciate that. I'm the chair of S I D two-fifteen and, uh, wanted to raise two specific concerns associated with our S I D. And then some general concerns that I think I've heard echoed already that I won't go into a lot of detail. And I just wanna comment about them as well. Um, so first of all, uh, the first issue has to do with, um, a park issue, um, with a fountain. Um, and I appreciate, uh, the explanation. I've gotten the same explanation, obviously, by email. I appreciate your email, sir. Um, the, the issue is that not everyone about the S I Ds, and I can speak to ours more specifically. There is no HOA at all in S I D two-fifteen. There's no enforcement of covenants. There's no, um, ability to do extra maintenance. Um, a, and in two thousand eight, the S I D was approached by the developer and asked if we were interested in, in acquiring land for another park. So we came to the city council, the, the S I D came to the city council and got city council approval to annex or to acquire that, uh, land and then to make improvements on that land, uh, to turn it into a park. Um, and as you're, I'm, I'm sure aware, the reason that that is required is because, uh, the state law requires the S I D to go to the city for that approval. Because ultimately, the city is going to be, uh, responsible for the maintenance of that park. And, and that's what we're asking for. That's the reason the state law exists and that's what we're asking for. There is no HOA. We're asking for the city to maintain a pond aerator, which prevents the pond from being green with moss. And it's right along the, the trail that goes behind, uh, Ron Boulevard that connects from Blackhawk. Um, I, I led the effort, spearheaded the effort to get that inter-local agreement, uh, to bring that trail system to connect two springs essentially now to where these, to the existing trail that existed in Blackhawk and then all the way to behind, uh, where the Walmart is, the neighborhood mark over there in that area. Um, and so it gets a lot of traffic. Um, it's certainly a lot nicer neighborhood without that, um, green moss on it, on a, on a pond. So we're asking for the aerator to be maintained the way that we've always maintained it. Number two, uh, and this is kind of a specific concern to this S I D. Uh, part of the S I D is Trigaron Ridge Townhomes, which is located at Twenty-Fifth and Fairview. Those, um, residents, um, do not receive M U D bills. Um, and so my question is, and I've been asking this question, I've left two voicemails, I've sent some emails. I appreciate the response that I had today, but the response that I got today only asked me more questions and no answers yet. And the, the issue is how will these people be allowed to select what trash service they want and then be billed for it since they don't have M U D bills? And that kinda gets to my general concerns and I wanna kinda talk. So I'm hoping that you can help me get answers to those questions. And then second, uh, my, my, uh, general concerns about all the annexations is I know, uh, the annexations is a big deal for the city. Uh, Mayor, I know you ran on this, it's a platform, and I congratulate you on following through on your campaign promises. The, the issue that I have is I, I'm not sure that all of the issues have been, uh, the questions and issues have been addressed. And so there are some things that are out there that are hanging. And I'm not, I'm a little concerned that the city is moving a little bit too fast. As an example, um, this afternoon, our S I D attorney received an email from Papillion Sanitation. That email shared that, uh, trash service was planned to start on one March, on the first of March. The concern that I have is our S I D is contracting for, for trash service now. That contract, according to the terms of the contract, ends immediately automatically upon annexation. So the concern that I have, and, and obviously, since we just got this email today, maybe there's an opportunity to work this out. But that potentially leaves us without trash service from November to March. So my question is, how are these things going to be addressed? And if we can't get them addressed, what are we, you know, we, we gotta work something out. And so I'm not asking the city not to annex us. I understand the finances. We're looking forward to be getting library services, somebody mentioned that. And I hear about that all the time. We're also looking forward to, uh, city ordinance enforcement. As you might be aware, the city doesn't like to pay people to enforce their ordinances, which they're allowed to do by law. Um, and I get lots of emails and phone calls as an S I D chair, asking me for, you know, getting, asking, you know, hey, why can't I get these ordinances enforced? Well, I go call the city, is what I always tell them. And of course, they always come back and say, and the city's not willing to do it, okay? Well, there's nothing I can do about that. So we're looking forward to those services. The issue is can, let's make sure we've dotted the i's and crossed the t's to make sure we've done all of our due diligence. Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak regarding Pipers Glen, Oakhurst, Trigaron Ridge?
S I D number two-one-five. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and I will let, uh, Jim talk trash.
It's my favorite subject. Thank you, Mayor. Chuck, just, uh, on, I'll start with the townhomes. It was just getting some clarity on that. And what would transpire with that is, well, we just need to know if there was a common dumpster that they were using or individual bins. You replied to me today that they're individual bins, which ultimately Papillion Sanitation will continue the individual removal, but without the M U D bill, the city will bill that separately to each homeowner. So that's already in works. The issue with, uh, Premier, I think Premier is providing your service now?
Yes.
The issue with Papillion Sanitation is until the annexation is approved, so they're ordering extra trucks and extra bins to, to accommodate the annexation. Technically, they can't accommodate that until the approval of the annexation. So they're gonna be a little bit behind the curve to make sure that they're on board. So they've already worked out an agreement with Premier. They're working out, there's several other trash haulers that, that provide service for the, the city. They're gonna maintain those agreements through the city to continue the trash service as they're currently experiencing until Papillion Sanitation gets their equipment in place to take over the service. So it won't be that your trash will sit on the street side. Premier will continue to remove it. If not, the city of Bellevue will step in and will, will accommodate. But the agreements are already going in place. So those are things that are all being worked behind the scenes. So it's, there is a lot of work to it, but it's not left unattended. As far as the, uh, the pond, I think we needed a definition on whether that was a retention pond. And a retention pond sometimes are put in during the building, building phase. If it's a true pond, we just needed the mechanics of what it takes to maintain that. And I think you did a pretty good job of answering me today, so then we'll get that into the works of our system too. So it's just understand, what we need to know is what do you do with that pond? So where's the aerator? When do you put it in? When do you pull it out? What's your monthly service fees? What are you paying for that? So that'll all be taken into account. And then our, between parks and streets, they'll take those things over and manage that going forward. So it's not that those are unintended, it's, are unattended. It's just that, just getting the process in play. And some of those, I, I don't look at them as surprises, just getting the inside information so we can fix and resolve that. So we are moving forward with it. We'll be ready to play the day if, if the annexation's approved. Uh, we got things in the works, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Just a, um, just a further note. Um, I've noticed several people, uh, mentioned parks and trails. Uh, Bellevue is kinda responsible for those S I Ds putting in parks and trails. So parks and trails are important to our community and we're not, we're not giving up on parks and trails. I mean, that's, that's an important part of this community and, uh, uh, it's our goal to, to make those look good and maintain them as well. Councilman Price?
Thank you, Mayor. One comment, Chuck. You had mentioned, uh, that the city wouldn't enforce the code and, code requirements. Uh, we do establish the code in the extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction, but as long as you're outside the city limits, the city has no authority to enforce that code. The county has to do that and it's.
I, I'd ask you to ask your attorney, uh, for an opinion on that because our S I D attorney's opinion is different than that.
Okay, but I will express my understanding and then if legal wants to respond. Uh, we have tried to enforce our code in areas that are in our zoning, ter, extraterritorial zoning just jurisdiction. And we're told that we are not able to. In case of law enforcement, it's the county sheriff that has to go in. And we have had some serious discussions. But if I need to be corrected, I am open. This is a learning experience and I'm glad you raised the issue.
Bree?
I, I think what Councilman Price said was accurate. Um, and once you are annex, i, if the council approves an annexation, then we can take over and we can enforce all those codes and, and hopefully deal with, hopefully deal with any issues that you're experiencing. Uh, but right now, we cannot enforce, um, any of those. That's a, that's a county job at this point. And if you want your attorney to contact me, I'm happy to have a conversation, um, with your attorney, uh, about that.
So Senator Crawford, when she was chairing the, uh, okay. A, as you're aware, Senator Crawford's from Bellevue. She was used to chair the Urban Affairs Committee. And during her time as the chair of the Urban Affairs Committee, this came up. Statute was changed to specifically authorize cities to enforce codes within their extraterritorial jurisdiction. So, um, well, I, 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 I agree. We'll have a follow-up. Uh, I'll have my attorney call you, ma'am. And so we can clarify that because this is, I mean, obviously, a lot of the S I Ds are, this is, will be less of an issue. But, um, we'll, we'll, we'll follow up.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Just have him call me.
Any further comments from the council? I think we answered the questions. Public hearings closed. That third reading on district number two-fifteen will be held October first, two thousand nineteen. Twelve E, ordinance number three-nine-seven-zero, request to annex Sanitary and Improvement District, number two-forty-two, Cedar View. Susan, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within Sanitary and Improvement District, number one, two-forty-two, as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing for a Sanitary Improvement District, number two-forty-two annexation. Is there anyone here?
That's right, thank you. My name is Robert Peterson. I'm the attorney for the district. And I just bring up this concern. I know that this is adjacent to Normandy Hills. And Normandy Hills is between the Darling, what is it? Darling Ingredients property, which is, you know, it's in court. So that annexation is not effective. And I don't, I think you're a little over your skis because you don't have the Darling Ingredients property. You're no longer contiguous, or you're not contiguous to either Normandy Hills or two-forty-two. And I think the annexation, at least of that district and probably Normandy Hills, I'm sorry I missed that, I was in another meeting. But until you're done with the Darling Ingredients lawsuit and that annexation becomes effective, you're not contiguous to either of those districts. So I just think this is premature and that the annexation should be deferred until that lawsuit is settled. Because otherwise, you've got an island out there. If the court deems that stuff to be agricultural and not subject to annexation, there's no contiguous. And I know that's a requirement of the statute. So I just think you ought to consider deferring that until that lawsuit is settled.
Thank you. We had that same, uh, argument. Thank you, we had that same, uh, argument, uh, with Normandy Hills, but I'm gonna ask our city attorney to.
Just briefly, I don't want to get into too much because it is pending litigation, but I just wanted to correct what you said. Uh, the Darling Ingredients property and the Creche property are currently annexed in the city. There was a motion for a temporary restraining order, um, and an ex parte that the city won, and that was not granted. So they are currently, um, annexed into the city.
Well, has that, has that been appealed to the Court of Appeals?
It has not been appealed, currently.
Well, if they appeal it to the Court of Appeals, it, it stays the annexation. I've been through this with three or four other districts, and I know that's the law, so.
I just wanted to correct your statement that they are currently not in the city, because they are currently in the city.
But the lawsuit is not final until the appeal date expires, correct?
I'm not going to get into pending litigation any further than that at this point.
Well, okay, I just, I'm just suggesting that if they appeal it, you're not contiguous with either of those districts. And I don't think that your ordinance is gonna be valid. If that is appealed, I think you have to, to stay that annexation until that gets resolved.
Okay, thank, I, um, I'll just make state, same statement I made when, uh, we were going with through Normandy Hills. Uh, the council's been advised on what's going on regarding the litigation. Uh, we're listening to your questions, those questions that come from the council, we'll bring them back up with the attorney and we'll,
Okay.
we'll consider them.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Yep. Anybody else wishing to speak? On S I D number two forty-two, Cedar View. Seeing nobody else, close the public hearing. That third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen, here in the council chambers. Item twelve F, ordinance number three nine seven one, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District number two sixty-nine, Orchard Valley. Susan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within Sanitary Improvement District number two sixty-nine as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, I'll open the public hearing for S I D number two sixty-nine, Orchard Valley. Is there anyone here wishing to speak regarding S I D number two sixty-nine annexation? Seeing nobody else, close the public hearing. That third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen, here in the council chambers. Item twelve G, ordinance number three nine seven two, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District number two seventy-nine, Spring Creek. Susan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within the Sanitary Improvement District number two seventy-nine as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, I'll open the public hearing for S I D number two seventy-nine, Spring Creek, is there anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak regarding number two seventy-nine, Spring Creek? Seeing nobody else, close the public hearing. That third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen, here in the council chambers. Item twelve H, ordinance number three nine seven three, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District number two eighty, Kennedy Town Center. Susan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within Sanitary Improvement District number two eighty as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. I'll open up the public hearing uh, for S I D number two eighty.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Barbara Lemoine, I'm president of the H O A for Kennedy Ridge. And, um, just a couple statements. Um, we had our annual meeting with our members yes, last evening, and we want to thank you for the annexation we approve, all that. Everybody was positive about that. We did have the question regarding trash again. We do currently have a agreement with Papillion Sanitation in place. Um, we do use the big bins, so we just want to understand a little bit more if that changes. At last, at the Planning Commission, it did say that you would honor that request or that contract that's in place. But we would be able to change out the bins. So I think just some clarification about how that changed, or if you have a point of contact on your board that we might be able to use us, because we are in communication with M U D. Um, because right now, our M U D bills do not include trash, because the H O A pays for trash. And so any changes there, obviously, it might affect our dues and things like that. So if we have a rep, we do have a representative on our H O A board, uh, talking to M U D. If we have someone on your board that, if we need to talk, if there's questions, I guess, like that, that's my request there. So anything like that, but thank you, appreciate it.
I'll flip that back to Jim.
So Papillion Sanitation will, they'll, they'll mail you a letter, um, to each homeowner, actually. Explain the city services, there's three different bin sizes alike, so all that'll be communicated in the letter as to what your next step will be. And since you're already using Papillion Sanitation, it'll be a pretty easy transition. And then your billing will go from the city on the M U D bill, so M U D actually does our billing. So they'll get their, uh, trash removal, uh, attached to their M U D bill, so it'll be part of your M U D bill. So if it's included in your homeowners association, but that'll all be included in your letter. So if you're setting your rates for your homeowners association, that'll be up to you to, to change that rate.
To modify it, so there would be no, it's automatically going to M U D, so we would need to really modify our, our dues.
Yes, as an example, I live in a S I D that, uh, the S I D actually pays for the trash removal, but it's technically coming out of our taxes. So when we're annexed, um, I'll, I'll have a bill on my M U D bill, it'll be part of my M U D bill. So the S I D won't have that responsibility, but we'll communicate that all in a letter. That should be coming within the next two weeks to you and to every resident out there. So they'll outline what the services is and what, what's available to you. And then you can go through and pick the size of bin you want, at what rate. And you should see a reduction in rate from what you're probably currently, uh, paying, we would hope. Because by having a, a larger volume remover here, it should be some economies in scale.
Okay.
But that should be forthcoming in about two weeks here.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding S I D number two eighty? Seeing nobody else, close the public hearing. Councilman Price.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would just comment that it's nice to have someone come up and say, you voted and you want the annexation. It's refreshing from one side, and we've had that with a number of prior S I D annexations. So it isn't everybody that just opposes it. Usually, it's quality of service and what's it gonna do to my taxes that come up. And regarding quality of service, we think our sanitation, our police, our fire, we think our services will be on par with the best of what you have, and in most cases, will be better. But in addition to that, I just want to say, there's going to be some ups and downs. And we would ask you to let us know when there are issues that come up, or if you have questions. We want this to be as smooth a process as we can possibly make it. We have excellent staff who will work to make that happen. But if a hiccup or something does come up, please just call, give us the details and the information so we can address it as quickly as we can. We want to welcome people into the city, and we hope that you feel welcomed. And we want to make this transition, if it all goes through, as smooth as possible and as painless for everybody as we can make it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, you will have council members and the mayor to contact with all your questions, and people do that, so just keep that in mind as well. Councilwoman Walsh.
I just want to say that I know there's quite a bit of concerns with regards to the trash, and we have one of the best personnel when it comes to that. When Bellevue, Jeff, when did we go into that program that's kind of the pioneer programs that other cities are watching? I mean, your staff did a great job of communicating and just making that all work.
We started the pilot program about three years ago, and we've just ended, or we're going, we're in our second year of the actual program itself.
And the recycling, talk, can you just share that a little bit about what that has done?
We went from about, uh, seven percent diversion up to forty percent right now.
So it, it's doing a great job for the community, doing a great job for the environment, and they just, um, they, they just really got it together, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? In case I didn't close that public hearing, it is closed. Third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen, on S I D number two eighty. Item twelve I, ordinance number three nine seven four, request to annex Sanitary Improvement District number two eighty-nine, Colonial Point at Fairview. Susan, please read the ordinance.
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots and real estate lying within Sanitary Improvement District number two eighty-nine as outlined in the ordinance to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you, I'll open the public hearing on S I D number two eighty-nine, Colonial Point at Fairview. Anybody wishing to speak? S I D number two eighty-nine, Colonial Point at Fairview. Seeing nobody else, close the public hearing, that third reading will be held October first, two thousand nineteen. Item twelve J, ordinance number three nine seven five, request to annex Lot one five six, Pipers Glen, Lot three fifty-two, Oakhurst, Lot thirty-six A two A, Pleasant Hill or Martin subdivision, Tax Lot B one B, located in the northeast quarter of Section six, and Tax Lot one B, located in the northeast quarter, Section fifteen, and all in Township thirteen north, range thirteen east of the sixth P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska. And since I read all that, I'll save you the trouble, Susan, so.
Thank you.
I'll open the public hearing, anybody wishing to speak regarding ordinance number three nine seven five, please come forward. Seeing nobody else, close the public hearing. Takes us to item thirteen, ordinances for introduction, first reading, we have none this evening. Fourteen A was removed. Fourteen B, request for a conditional use permit for Lot twenty-four Child's Estate Acres for the purpose of a self-storage facility. Applicant Barney Barrett, general location, South Ninth Street and Carey Street. Is the applicant here? Oh, there he is. Okay, you don't need to come forward, I'll just open up the public hearing, unless you want to make a statement, Barney?
No.
Just stick around in case there's any questions, please. Uh, I'll open the public hearing, is there anyone here, uh, to speak for or against the conditional use permit?
Hi, uh, my name's Art Childers, I live on eighty-three ten South Ninth Street. That's right down the street from where Mr. Barrett wants to have his storage huts. I have a couple complaints, uh, as I seen the drawings of the, uh, plan. Um, our street is a gravelled asphalt top. And we had sewer problems, uh, in the past, where our sewers collapsed. And after that happened, the city came out and put five-ton regulations on that road. Well, that don't work, trust me. With all this stuff to the, to the south there, the construction companies, the, the car dealers, uh, we got car transports coming down the road, we have semis coming down the road. And it is hard on our streets, it's hard on our sewer. Few years back, I woke up on, on, uh, Christmas Eve, I mean, excuse me, day after Christmas, and I had four inches of sewer in my basement, because our, the line broke out there. Three other people was the same way. And then that got repaired, then on Virginia Street, there was a sewer repair here just last two years. So our streets do not really stand up to heavy traffic. And we can't get enough enforcement for that five-ton ordinance, okay? And plus the twenty-five mile an hour too. What I'm afraid of, since Mr. Barrett will have his driveway coming on Ninth Street, and with all this, the, the trucks and cars and moving vans and stuff that would be coming in there, that's still, I know it ain't very much, but it's enough that may hurt our sewers again. And I, and the person that owned that before had storage in there, uh, he did not have a entrance off of Ninth Street. He went off Carey Street with it, and one, for they get in and out of there very well. Uh, because they can get in better off of Carey Street than Child's Road. Child's Road is only twenty-one feet wide, I mean, excuse me, Ninth Street, is only twenty-one feet wide, dang it, very wide. And we have trouble enough now with, uh, uh, you know, we don't have sidewalks enough, kids, you know, walking down the street, in the street, and all that good stuff. That is very concerned in mind, that the traffic will increase there, the truck traffic will increase unless we do something about, you know, his entrances or something of that, where we guarantee that they won't be going down the street and stuff, and that's my major complaint.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak regarding special, or the request for the conditional use permit on Lot twenty-four Child's Estates? Child's Estate? See? Okay, seeing nobody else, close the public hearing. Uh, Mrs. Paul.
If I may address the concern, um, the Public Works and I, and Director and myself have discussed this, we share similar concerns. Um, South Ninth Street is posted with a weight limit, we do not want heavy equipment or construction equipment to traverse South Ninth Street. I talked to Mr. Barrett and his team yesterday. Um, they are agreeable to put language into the conditional use permit agreement. So I would offer an amendment to that agreement that, um, we keep construction equipment off of South Ninth Street, that they would use Carey Street. His entrance is on South Ninth Street. Public Works Director and myself are working through those issues. If there is equipment at all on Ninth, South Ninth Street, it would be very minimal, and there's perhaps a way we can route it to utilize Carey Street completely. But that is something that we will put in the conditional use permit agreement. And Mr. Barrett and his team are agreeable to follow through on that.
Councilman Cook?
One of my concerns is, if the equipment and everything has to go north, to, they want to get to Fort Crook, they want to go to Omaha, how, how is that route gonna be from his location?
He would take Carey Street out and take Fort Crook.
So on Fort Crook, he would have to go southbound? Or is that, is that a?
Correct. We just, we, that's correct, we just want to avoid any heavy construction traffic going north to Virginia Street.
I know, but I just, Mr. Barrett, I'm probably more so. If, if you got equipment that needs to go northbound, if you go out to Carey Street, you still gotta go southbound on Fort Crook.
Yeah, they're gonna have to go down and turn around somewhere. I'm gonna put it right in the contract, this contract, that they can't go south on Ninth. You know, there's only gonna be really one heavy two. I mean, you got your excavating guys, you got your concrete guys, other than that, it's all light.
Are they in and out every day, or is this something that?
Well, I mean, during construction?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, till you get it done, I. Yeah, I, yeah, and we're not gonna start it out till spring, we're gonna lose this fall, we're gonna construct anyway. Snow's coming faster than you think, you know, and so we're not gonna try it till spring. But no, we'll make them so you, I, I've, I've talked to the neighbors, that is one of their big concerns, and I, I, I get it, I'm a plumber. I, I know what it does to the sewers, so I appreciate that, you know.
Thank you.
Councilman Stenson?
I think one of your concerns, sir, wasn't just during construction, wasn't it when the place opens up of, like, moving trucks coming in?
Yeah, that's.
Uh, if he's asking the question, I guess, it's okay.
Yes, that's my complaint, that the traffic, is that better now? Uh, is the traffic itself coming in and out of there? The other storage huts are there, they do not, they have emergency gates there, but they don't use that. They use the very, uh, the gate going in and out, down by the railroad tracks, you know, on, on Carey Street. Now, you just said south, I'm worried about going north, okay?
No, what I'm saying, if he had a job to the north, he's gonna have to go down and come back around.
Yeah, just like the, he has equipment sitting in there now. Yeah, just like the, he has equipment sitting in there now, that that, I hope that never goes down our road and stuff. That that he has in there, sitting in there, it's a, it's I think a a line tamper, excavator, yeah, and stuff, so. That's that's the concern and I'm not really doing, I think one of my neighbors sent something in and everything else. The only reason I never got to go to the uh planning board on this is is to bring this up is because they moved it up a half hour. Because they had a big agenda that night, I missed it, so. But that's the main thing there, just, and I could say, we just have a, we have enough traffic there, it's terrible. It's it's really bad for whatever area, especially with all the car dealerships and stuff down that way.
Councilman Shannon?
Looking at your project, can we bring up page ten? The entrance right now is on the top right, it would be just as easy to put that entrance down the bottom in the center.
Oh, I'm good over there. I I bet, that's where I wanted originally. I want, that's what I wanted, it would have been simpler.
Right.
The problem is, the city requires me to pave that whole street up the hill and sewer and water and storm sewers. I gotta develop great big road to get that entrance, it's a hundred foot off Ninth, I would much rather gone through Carey. I've been through that for, you know, you're talking to the choir, I'm telling you, I get it, but it didn't work out.
That'd be better for the area and the neighborhood and would address the neighbors' concerns, so talk to me.
If he were to come off of Carey, Carey Street would have to be improved, so um, Mr. Barrett is avoiding with the entrance on South Ninth. He's avoiding having to improve Carey Street to make that entrance acceptable.
Is that Jeff's problem or his problem?
Developers.
Yes, that was, yes.
It's developers.
The city will not put that infrastructure in for a private development.
Has there been any other applications to the ground up Carey Street to the south side? Uh, it seems like there's some activity there, so that might be getting paved at some point anyway.
Correct, we have had some preliminary discussions, so that is a possibility in the future.
Okay.
You know, another thing to bring up, this is only gonna be a hundred spots, this is not a big, we're taking one of those whole buildings just for our own stuff for a business. So that leaves, you know, sixty, seventy, they'll never be empty, these guys put stuff in there and they never see it again, I mean.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think the.
And I would point out.
The traffic from the moving truck or pickup trucks moving stuff in and out is gonna be the problem.
Mr. Barrett does not have any outdoor storage for RVs or larger um vehicles either on this property, it will all be smaller um indoor storage base.
Cars or boats, that's what we're going after. We don't have any small bays where people come and go, it's all just ten by twenties, that's it.
I had a spot one time and had it for five years and I think I was there five times.
What's the timeframe on the the future development down there?
I don't know that I can speak to that, the discussions that I've had with potential developer are extremely preliminary, so.
Short term, long term?
I would say probably a couple years at least.
Councilman Cook?
So Mr. Barrett, what you're saying is, is you're gonna use a good portion of this and you have a couple pieces of heavy equipment?
That's gonna be gone once this thing's done.
But then the rest of the storage will be just normal garages.
Yeah.
So.
There's only, there's four buildings and one of the big ones we're keeping for ourselves, so.
So what 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 besides, the stuff that uh people would bring to your place, what would it be, would it be cars?
Yeah, it's, they're all, they're all just one car garages.
But no one's gonna be storing any large size vehicle, they're not, you're not.
Fit in there, just, it's just a one car garage, is all they're getting.
And what's your big pieces of equipment?
Well, they won't go there, they're going, mostly, they sit, we just happen to have this here, our stuff sits out the job site, we got jobs all over Omaha. If there are a lot, that means we ain't doing nothing, they don't come in.
So the weight limit on Ninth Street to the north is what?
Five tons.
And that would just take le, take typical cars and you wouldn't have anything bigger than cars?
No, we're not gonna put nothing.
Besides maybe a couple pieces of your equipment.
Yeah, maybe in the winter bring our Bobcats in, that's about it, you know.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm still just thinking about the sewers and the sewer breakage and. Uh, I certainly wouldn't want a sewer breaking in my house or having issues and I don't know how we address that. If the sewers need updating, I know that uh she was complimented earlier, but Epiphany Ramos, our wastewater treatment manager. Is excellent with our trash collection, but also with the sewers. If that area is part of what we're working on updating the sewer lines, maybe we could get a a sense of what's happening. With the sewers in that area and I don't know if you have that information, Jeff?
No, I don't have that at this moment.
Okay, I know we're doing it, but there's a a system that's happening with some of the worst ones. And I think down in Old Town, it's being replaced, but uh older areas are being addressed. Thank you.
Tammy, do you have a written amendment? Did you say you had an amendment for?
I do, I gave it to Mr. Barrett and his team yesterday, so I can provide it prior to third reading so that everyone can have it. Or sorry, this isn't third reading, I can um, I have a copy of it, basically we added language that just indicated all construction equipment. Um, shall use Carey Street for access. And it would stay off of South Ninth Street and abide by the weight limit posted.
Tammy, this is public hearing tonight, so we won't have third reading, if you want to just restate um. The uh, I guess gist of the amendment and then somebody can make a motion um confirming what you said and then we can work out um.
Sure.
The language in there, I think it'll probably be the appropriate thing.
Does the amendment call for a sign to be put there, no construction equipment?
There already is a sign there, so the conditional use permit agreement gets signed by the city, gets signed by Mr. Barrett. It would be on file with the registered deeds office, it just kind of gives us an extra hammer.
No, I meant for the truck drivers who are gonna be driving down there not knowing all this, these discussions.
It is already posted, there is weight limit signs posted out there, um, Mr. Roberts had confirmed that, so it already is posted. This just kind of enforces what's already posted on the street.
And Mr. Barrett did mention that it would be in his construction contract that would require him to do that, otherwise uh they'd be breaking their contract. And there could be some liquidated damages on things like that.
Well, there's three construction companies already on that street, it's gotta be equipment, I could be waving at them, but they ain't even gonna stop for me. What, oh, this, Dan Meyer?
Hello, my name's Dan Norman, I'm with Civil Solutions and I'm the engineer on the project. I did receive the email yesterday and I read it, um, there is a grading plan yet that still has to be approved by the city. One, and on that plan, I can show where the entrance and exit is gonna be for the construction equipment. Because we have to include a construction entrance with crushed rock, that can be come off right off of um. Carey Street, not a problem. And right now, I think the one we submitted does show it coming off of Ninth Street, but that can be changed. And it, and and again, that plan still has to be approved by the city, I think Dean Dunn has to, has to look at that.
Good, like it. So. Councilwoman Welch?
Can I make a motion that we accept into the record the language that Tammy Palm sent to Mr. Barrett? Um, do I need to say anymore with this? Is that good enough? Okay, so I'm gonna make that motion.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Preister. Did we inclu, is this an amendment or did we include it in the? We have to approve it separately?
Yeah, so the motion by Ms. Welch, Councilwoman Welch was to approve the amendment as stated by Ms. Palm when she um originally started speaking. So it's a, it's a motion to amend the conditional use permit based off of that language, then there was the second by Preister. So we would need to vote on that and then vote on that conditional use permit as amended.
Nope.
Do a motion to approve and then we'll do an emotion to amend.
I'll make a motion to approve. Item fourteen B.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon to approve fourteen B.
Now I'm gonna make the motion to add the language that Ms. Tammy Palm said on the, with regards to the conditional use permit amendment.
Motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon to approve the amendment, is there any questions on the amendment language? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Okay, now we have a motion by Welch, seconded by Shannon to approve. The conditional use permit for lot twenty-four Child's Estate. As amended, please vote.
We have five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Cook voting no.
Thank you. Item fourteen C, uh, Mr. Barrett, it passed, so, yep. Item fourteen C request for conditional use permit for lot one Milt's Edition for the purpose of a self-storage facility. Applicant is Chandler Storage West LLC, general location is two seven one five Chandler Road West. Is the applicant here, yep?
Yes.
Uh, good evening, my name's Charlie Falk, I'm the owner of Milt's Mini Storage on Twenty-seventh and Chandler Road. On back before you, uh, I think it's been three months or approximately that time since I was last here. And since that time, the grading and the engineering had to be completed and in that process, um. There were six buildings, I don't know if that's shown on that drawing. But what's happened is the the buildings have been pushed together, they were about thirty foot apart, they've been pushed together. And in doing so, that's added about fourteen hundred to eighteen hundred square feet to the project. And the planning department recommended that we come back before you for approval for the additional fourteen or eighteen hundred feet, whatever it was. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, if you just stick around for questions, I'll open up the public hearing, is there anyone here to speak for or against? The conditional use permit for lot one Milt's Edition? Anyone here to speak for or against? Seeing nobody, I'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments, Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have some comments and it's unfortunate, but the neighbors are still opposed. And don't feel like the council has responded well to them, so they're not here. I attended the Planning Commission meeting just to hear what they were going to say. Got contacted by a couple of them, but they didn't come to the Planning Commission hearing, no one opposed it, so it has moved on. Uh, Mrs. Misek across the road didn't even know that the driveway uh going across Cedar Island Road. Had already been approved prior and she called me in between and was concerned that she didn't have a chance to. Even comment on it and she's in a wheelchair, so she couldn't come. So I assured her that I would speak to let people know of her concern with lights and cars and traffic. Coming out right across near her driveway, but toward her house, so she was concerned about that. I got a, an email done, I guess you already know of the revision to the original plans. We were promised no open storage, all buildings. Now this revision shows about seventy-five percent open storage, not sure that's accurate. I cannot help but think this was the master plan all along. We, the neighborhood, will be the ones that are forced to look at it daily. Yes, retention ponds have been adjusted and I have seen them work and work well. But in time, they will be nothing more than an eyesore, what with all the open storage, fluids leaking from old cars and being washed into them. I hope the EPA has a hand in this, this is going to be a pain in ours and the city's butts for years to come, I'm afraid. And. I've had other phone calls and verbal conversations and I I just know that the neighbors are feeling a little dejected. And I want to make statements and comments on their behalf because I have been listening to them.
Sure, sure, um, the part about the additional outside storage or parking that wasn't included, that's not a correct statement. The parking has actually been reduced from what was originally proposed. That didn't need any other approval or back before the board. The only reason we're here is, as I mentioned, the buildings are being pushed together thirty foot between each set of buildings. That's the reason we're here.
Yes, there's about forty-one parking stalls outside that are being removed. And then the six buildings are being consolidated into three. And you're adding just under, I think it's about forty-four, no fifty-four square feet less than two thousand square feet. About the size of a house, additional space inside.
That is correct.
And in terms of the runoff and the leaking oil and antifreeze and and those things. Uh, any comment on preventing that from contaminating?
Our engineers will address that before we would have approval from Public Works, if that's an issue.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Ms. Palm?
Mr. Preister, um, I would point out that part of one of the attachments in the staff report shows the previously approved site plan. It's dated January ninth, the twenty nineteen, city council approved it in February. Um, the access point along Cedar Island did not change, it was there in the previous submission, it stayed there. So the neighbors were notified, they did get a copy of the site plan um last winter. And the site plan that they got this time around reflects the same exact access, so that did not change from the first time the neighbors were notified. Also, the detention basins did not change either. Um, as Mr. Falk said, there was always outdoor storage proposed, again, that's in the site plan that was originally approved and is part of the packet. And he is actually proposing to reduce that area in this proposal.
Thank you, Ms. Palm, I appreciate the clarification. My reference to these uh two detention ponds was originally in the plan. There was going to be one large one to the south, then it got modified after the public hearing, I believe. And one was put to the north to drain it that way and then one to the south, a smaller one. So the reference about the detention ponds in the email was was for that. The other clarification I I appreciate is the driveway and uh. It was, should be no reflection on you or your department, the notification went out. But Mrs. Misek didn't see it, didn't get it, was in the hospital and just wasn't able to get here. So I I didn't mean to mislead, she just didn't know and then couldn't get here because of her condition, so. Thank you for that clarification.
Yep. Welcome back. In the uh, the meetings we held with the neighbors last time and and everything, one of the compromises worked out, I just want to make sure that this has not changed. Was that uh you were gonna provide uh an area outside of your fence for the animals to get back that uh kind of migrate down toward that uh pond area. Um, tho- those plans have not changed, the compromise that we reached with the neighbors is still in place, there's still gonna be that path for them to get up and down there.
That is correct, there's no changes other than the buildings being pushed together, which increased about two thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand feet, whatever it was. And a reduction in the open parking that was originally proposed. Nothing with the fence or the detention basins or the access has changed.
Okay, just verifying for uh constituent calls.
Understood.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Welch?
And again, um, I know that you guys have been very proactive in the landscaping that you're gonna do, very friendly with the. The um wildlife that comes through there and none of that has changed, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted that.
Okay, I just wanted that on the record for clarification, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? Councilman Preister?
Yes, uh. The wildlife can go through, but nothing has changed, if you drive by, it looks very different. All the trees are wiped out, it's very open, it looks very bleak and industrial, and that's what I'm hearing. So, I. It isn't going to make a lot of difference, but I'm going, it's already approved, this is just a modification that may not make it any, any worse. It may make it better, actually, so my vote is likely to be symbolic. But based on what I'm hearing from the neighbors, and per section six point oh six oh one. Requires no conditional use permit shall be granted if it is detrimental to the public comfort. Or general welfare of the community, and the neighbors feel that that is the case. And further, six point oh six point oh two. Will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the vicinity. And at least, this one person and others have expressed that it, it will be injurious to their enjoyment. So, I'm just going to reflect the, the neighbors' concerns in my vote.
Do I have a motion? I didn't write one down, anybody have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve fifteen C.
I'll second it.
Motion by Shannon. Motion by Shannon, seconded by Welch to. Approve fourteen C, any questions, Councilman Cook?
I just wanna make a quick statement, and Mr. Preister touched on it too, this project's already been approved, I did not support it when it was approved. However, my feeling is, by adding more indoor and reducing outdoor, that's gotta be a plus. So even though I did not support it originally, I'm gonna support tonight your conditional use. You could still build what was approved back in February. You're just making, that's already been decided by the council, and I did not support that. But I think the fact that you're adding more indoor and reducing outdoor, I'm gonna support this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please vote.
We had five yes votes and one no vote with Mr. Preister voting no.
Thank you, item fifteen, resolutions, we have none, we moved item seventeen, the administrative reports up ahead of sixteen. Uh, are there any comments or questions on those reports from the council? We'll accept those into the record. Could've done that earlier. It's gonna take a minute before we go into, I think someone's gonna make a motion to go into closed session, but. I wanna welcome Kevin Hensel, our new, uh, chamber president, he sat through this whole meeting and acted like he enjoyed it. Congratulations. So, we're gonna go to sixteen H. Uh, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the purchase agreement for the city to obtain certain parcels of property. Councilman Burns?
I move that the City Council go into closed session at this time for protection of the public interest. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session is regarding purchase agreement for certain real estate. The following individuals will be included in closed session. All City Council members, Mayor Rusty Hyke, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins. Paralegal Tony King and Jeff Roberts.
Second.
Okay, motion by Burns, seconded by Cook. To go into closed session. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, the City Council has voted to go into closed session at this time, the subject matter to be discussed in closed session is regarding purchase agreement. For certain real estate, the following individuals will be included in closed session, all, all City Council members. Mayor Rusty Hyke, City Administrator Jim Risto, Attorney Bree Robbins, paralegal Tony King, and Jeff Roberts.